Minutes of the June nineteenth are in front of you. If there's no changes or questions.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? The agenda's approved. We have dinner served, looks like.
Meeting of commissioners tonight. I told, I told Brad, Mayor Oppenauer and Commissioner Jason over here.
We have some leftovers.
What's that?
Leftovers. They're forks. Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. We'll wait for ya.
I said, maybe we need our alleyway or something after this.
It was really needed hydration.
Yeah. Here we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Posted. Motion carried. Thanks. Union State Bank. Appreciate it. Four A. Shared use path, shared use path repairs. We have an estimate here for this. And we do have an area that I did take a look at last week also. Buckled pretty bad and I've only had one other person from our community send the pictures of it complaining, but I'm not sure if anybody else has had an opportunity to take a look at it or not. Jason, you have statements. It does need repair and if we're putting caution signs out there and painting it. Probably needs some attention. When, when does it need attention? I guess that's something we need to discuss. But I think it does need some eventually. Tim Shores did bring, give us an estimate for seven thousand six hundred dollars to replace two hundred and forty feet of it. The rebar and concrete. What are your, what are your thoughts? And even though it says shared use path, it's, it's, there's no sharing cost. It's all, it's, it's all ours. Casey, if.
I'd just like to say that, that you'd just like to see us do more areas than just that. I mean, there's a couple, a couple of other spots are, are probably kind of a liability, you know. It's, it's used a lot, so.
Have you? Maybe we should have Ronnie or take a look at the entire thing. It's maybe mark it and then see what Tim, I don't know what Tim's timeline is or what he can do in one shot, but I think you're, you're right. You know, part of our, part of our path is asphalt, part of it's concrete. This concrete portion's been there for a long time. But I think we should replace concrete with concrete, but you know, the asphalt areas, I'm not sure if we want to cut out and put concrete at the same time. Williams Builders will be doing some asphalt work here, putting roads in a couple of weeks. So I'm not sure if that's something we wanted to join with them or not. Mark, are there specs from the engineer's standpoint where, you know, what we can kind of get away with or call it not, not too dangerous or?
You mean as far as the crack itself?
Right.
Whatnot? It, it's really more of a common sense thing. I can't say if there's any specs that say if your crack is, you know, so wide or, you know, displaced so much, but you know, obviously with the concrete and rebar and everything else, it would happen, but it's, it's more of an eye test, really.
Yeah. So Casey, you think we should do this and then designate other areas to get done in the next year or so or?
Well.
On this, on this?
Now, yeah.
Or now, yeah, alright. You know, this year.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you would have to do a, a full, like, stretch at a time, you know, like. Maybe just do the problem areas, you know.
Right.
But.
And I'm sure he'd probably like to form up as many as he can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hope they would take, and pour or move along wherever they can, but.
Is there vertical displacement?
A little bit, yeah.
Yes. Okay. This one's really bad.
Yeah.
That, that would be the biggest concern. More so than the horizontal crack.
Where you've got probably not the right compaction underneath anymore. There's more problems underneath that concrete.
Well, too, I'm not sure if this actually does have a, like, rebar. Cause I think some of it that I watched before, before, I don't think that I think kind of it's rebarred and so. That would help, I think.
And Tim's bid is with rebar, yeah. Okay, so do we want to think about possibly approving this and having, and because of made other areas or wait for this with one full, one larger? How does that proceed with that then?
Well, I guess how much money, I guess we're gonna spend on this?
Good question. I think, I think we get this portion done and have, and designate what other areas we thought needed to be done, but get a bid for it at least and see where, see where you're coming at. And then if we can take care of that sooner or later, fine. If not, then we have to put some on for next summer, too. Steve?
I guess good question from up here. We, we already have transportation. And highway grant. Thing for the, our shared use paths, I guess, special areas, parts. We've gotten some. I know with, because gone on the bike path along the North Side of two hundred, that's been, it was originally put in, and then it was a major project to do it again. And actually, I think we got some grant money to go through and refurbish it again. And so DOT participated in that one, I think, twice. So it might be worth checking into to see if that's something we're talking about, bigger area. I mean, I've seen that one out there that's bad, you know? And, and what, there might be an opportunity, there's a larger area that needs to be done that we can go through with that. And the problem with that is that that's out there ways. I'm thinking if we put in for it now, you might not get the money until, like, nineteen, so.
Well, it could be in the form of the reimbursement.
Well, maybe. I don't know if they'll do reimbursements.
Yeah.
But there again, where we've done some of these and this chunk that goes through North Star Two Park and actually gone over two or three seconds where they are concrete. What, when the DOT participated in those, they participated at eighty percent of the asphalt, we get both bits. We get asphalt and then concrete. And so they would pay, for cost a hundred thousand dollars to do it, they would give us eighty thousand dollars to do the asphalt. If it costs another hundred thousand dollars to do concrete, why then our share was a hundred and twenty thousand, they paid eight.
Like what we did up to the Gulfboro.
Yeah.
So do you, do you want to look into that, Steve? Check this scene, see before you retire.
I'll check and see where, where it's at and if it can be used. I think like that one on the North Side of two hundred, that was a lot of money for almost total replacement, tore out replacement. With asphalt. And the reason we went with concrete and some of those other areas is because, like at North Star Two Park, with some flooding and stuff, it's not, well, concrete's gonna stand out a lot better than that asphalt.
Okay.
Let's see, see.
See, that's what it's called, yeah.
So do we wait on this then too, to see if we can incorporate this or what think this?
Wow. Like I said, it's been quite a ways out. I'm thinking it's probably different until maybe nineteen, eighteen, nineteen. So yeah, I don't know if you want to wait that long.
Well, I think this stretch needs to be addressed.
Trying to remember where they looked out there, when you look at the picture. If there was just those three section, I can't remember how far.
Well, I think he was going way up here then as well. And this, this is east of that crack.
That looks like it's the, either retarded or filled it in or something.
Yeah, that one's been there a while.
And if that's not offset, you know, it might still be a problem. So I, maybe we should just wait and take a closer look at that if you can and well, it's probably up there and take a peek at it.
Where is this at?
This is, um. There's a couple of spots by the new baseball diamond, too, that are bad. And pretty shocked, well, we destroyed that ourselves, too.
East of there, along Third Street, there's still some spots, too, that we need to address.
In front of the city shop, we break down.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Alright, so we have the opposition to us just waiting on this and taking a closer look at it and wrap our arms around the, on spots.
Yeah. You know, even if we just, just, just like top to ten and say, well, these are all the spots we want to do. Let's give us a bit to check.
Alright. Sounds good. Thank you. Five A. Alright, alley one way between West River Telephone and the post office. This is brought, uh, this is, this is not the first time this has been brought to our attention. But we do have, we do have some concern about this being an unsafe two-way stretch. I don't know, I has anybody, do you guys use that alley when you're, when you're dropping off man or you're?
I have used it and I, I agree. I think that one way would be a really good idea, cause it really isn't big enough for really two cars to go through safely. And most of the traffic is the way that you're pointing it. I mean, cause I have used it a number of times, yeah.
I would love to see a log from either a police or where, how many accidents have ever taken place in this, in this alley. Cause I feel, you're right, it's tight.
Yeah.
Is it dangerous? I don't think it's dangerous.
I don't think a lot of people go the other way.
Right. People drive stupid no matter what, no matter where. And that's gonna cause some issues at times, but I was actually more concerned with the asphalt myself than the, than the direction, but.
Mostly it's gonna affect West River, cause those guys park in there. And then they're only gonna be able to go out one way.
I'm assuming the Eltra pulls in through. Pulls in and goes, pulls in to the west, I'm assuming.
Comes in usually and then backs in.
Yeah.
So then the alley access from the south? People are still coming from the south, but they they would have to head to the west after the accident.
Yeah, how would you mark that? If we made it on one way?
Coming in from the south?
Maybe I could put signs up.
I don't know. Anybody feel like we need to do this right now? I don't think so. Is it something we can do, we want to study, to see how much traffic even goes through there? That might be good. And I don't know if we can put down the strips and then see what kind of traffic we have through there and a certain amount of time.
Where do you get them from? You can just rent those.
Really?
Yeah. If that will change the direction, that just would be a cop.
They'll just give us a cop right now.
What is the cost? I'm not.
To rent them?
Yeah, is it cost effective? With that amount of traffic that actually goes through the alley? If you get a hold of the Sheriff's Department or a co, a police station there, say there have been no accidents, does it pay to have a count of how many people go through the alley?
No, probably not.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't expect.
If there's not a whole lot of traffic, I mean, you don't usually put counters out.
Yeah.
There'd be less than a hundred cars a day.
Yeah, that's.
What about putting a game cam out there? I mean, like, for somebody who likes to borrow.
Well, let's see what the police have to say first, Monte, about issues that we've had in there. I know when you're coming from east to, or west to east, you really have to be careful coming out there, cause a lot of people walk in that sidewalk, be, you know, from the post office. And it is, the traffic there is kind of heavy foot traffic, but it's not.
West River doesn't have a camera pointed out into their parking lot, would, that would catch traffic numbers? I don't know. Okay.
Can you have the discussion on this or action? Five B, local permit raffle for using area dollars or scholars.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion by Hack. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posted inside. Motion carried. Mark, you supposed to be on here somewhere?
I don't know. We didn't have a, for, and I can, that's a case you were.
Oh, okay, alright. You guys met, is there anything you want to discuss or?
Yeah.
Or you want to wait?
I'll wait.
For your report? Okay, I'm gonna move on to eight A. Just want to give you a quick update on Heritage Park project. We have had the power pole removed from the center of the, center of the park. Uh, there was a overhead line that went across Main Street into the park. Uh, and then there's a light on there. Um, that pole's been removed. And if the, and you put, has put a new pole over there with the LED light on it closer to the bathroom and right in the middle of the park. There's, Mark Olson has done the wiring that runs along the the railroad access in the back there. We're gonna put pedestals for power in there. And obviously you've noticed that the old can, the old canopy has gone up and has moved out to, and Chase Park looks great out there. And we do have the new piers poured over here. Last week Shores pulled up, poured the piers. Uh, the canopy will be moved over to this spot Saturday or Sunday morning. We have apparently the guys, the house movers are gonna do it tomorrow or Friday. They've been backed up a little bit, so they're gonna do it this weekend. After this place there, then they will pour a new slab underneath. So there's a concrete slab. So that'll, next week, that should be all put in place. And then, um, we have had some planning going on with, with our forester and a former forester. Uh, Sissy Quinn, to plan something, um, for planting behind, behind the canopy along the road. Just kind of maybe, hopefully in the future grows up and blocks some of the view of the the old power concrete, the industrial, just all industrial. So, uh, these are, these are moving forward and it's, uh, we're also kind of got a little plot set out where we're having the sidewalk tied in from the library all the way down to the park play area. So that's a quick update on that. Yes.
I know it's the right time, but could I have your report, your update on the the residence property?
Please do, yes.
Okay. Well, Officer Byer did a great job. He was present during that removal. The city, you know, ended up doing much of the cleanup. The resident who was charged with the offense of the business property did have friends and family or whoever there to help, you know, move some things around, but the city basically ended up doing most of the cleanup work there. And spent, uh, a lot of the day there, I think. And anyway, Officer Byer, Byer was there and had to do some negotiations to kind of keep things under control and he did a great job. But, uh, now they just want to make that important. I thought he handled that very well for the city. And it was, you know, resolve.
I agree, Pat. Thanks for bringing that up. Uh, they, he did a great job and sort of our city crew when they were there. We never did get in contact by any legal sources of representing that person, so I, I've had numerous people in the community address me about, about it, the situation and we're glad to see something move forward, but you're right, you did a great job. Thank you for mentioning that. Alright, Casey.
I'm gonna with Mark here about our our two sewer lines that we had. We had this. You know, it's like Kay saw here. Video. The one. The one sewer line just, just, uh, west of here in the alleyway, I guess that's kind of like a steel pipe that's in the street there. You know, for a, probably, probably about like a twenty-five foot span or so. I guess we have on that line has also got got, I guess fractures in the clay tiles and spots, you know. Minor stuff, probably, no. But, uh, on that line, Mark is going to, uh, see what's, if we can, I guess pull a liner in there. Or raise some other, I guess method there. And on the other line, that's up by, uh, up by up by, uh, Fourth Avenue. Northwest up there. There's three areas where there's a, another line or a pipe that's running through all the way through, up Sewer Main.
Three?
Yeah. And, you know, we're kind of kind of this, like, one in, one in, one is not a weatherlot, you know, water line, you know. You know, it was back in the nineties and they changed all the water. Water fees or not, but, uh, that one might take a little more a little more work, I guess, to, I guess, repair them. You know, the street there is fairly new, so.
So you think all three of those were pretty old or, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't think they're, I would say that they're not they're not, I guess, like, recent, so I mean, I don't know of any kind of work that was being done there.
Yeah, I mean, actually, I have.
So is it impeding anything? Mark, is it impeding anything at this point, Mark, or?
It would be obstructing the pipe. We can see this thing here passing through. So, yeah, I mean, you know, it would be obstructing the, uh,
Is it passing through like this or?
Yeah.
Really?
And that's, that's one of the areas the report mentions. Two others, where they say it looks like the pipe gone poured through the sanitary pipe.
Tell me through, tell me through this, Mark. So which is the?
This is the pipe that's passing through the sanitary, so.
Okay.
The TV, the cameras, interferes the walls of the sanitary, and this, this thing's just
wow. Passing through. That's on Fourth Avenue Northwest, north of me. Up the hill or at the bottom? Up the hill, okay. So this wouldn't be affecting right now?
No.
Oh, it's not.
Okay, good. And there's three like this.
According to the report, yeah.
Or if that's where, in the, they snaked that, didn't they? Didn't Brian say that? I thought I was talking to him one time about it. They were, as they were staking it, it was, it was catching.
It might suck, yeah. No, it could be very low, yeah.
That's probably what it was catching.
Yeah. I thought that was up by Roosevelt. The top of it.
See, I don't remember if it was going east and west or north and south, I don't recall.
That's, you got a lot of water in Sewer ninety-three. There was a water project, the water made to replace. I can swear they went north of, on Ford. So they shouldn't have poured anything and they had us, they went through and replaced the water line.
Now, they, they opened up the entire street.
The whole street.
Yeah, I mean, the water, we don't know if it's water. Just kind of guessing at this point, but, um, I mean, it may be a service line.
But yeah, and they're all, they're all down the hill. It's not up on top of that hill, so.
But I'm, I'm gonna contact Kay's tomorrow, see if he can give us cause, cause in the report, it just, as a matter of fact, you know, this is what we found. Maybe they can give you some more information on what they actually encountered out there.
Yeah. And then, uh, and we have a water bill issue, too. There's a couple of water meters, like when they were, when they were installed in, uh, oh eight, I believe it was. The new ones. And, uh, the two are, sorry, made up oh nine. And the two meters, you know, the reading, reading of the meters were wrong. I guess such a reading the wrong. Are the wrong, it's like residents, you know, you know, all this time. So that, uh, something on the difference of the two, two two, I guess, water bills over that, uh, over that period.
Nine years.
Yeah. It's about, I guess, it's about, I guess, fifteen hundred dollars. So then my question is, you know, you know, obviously we go back and, and So then my question is, you know, you know, do we go back and, and bill? Bill the other person or do we just, uh?
So did one paid person pay too much?
Yeah.
Okay. Ooh. Uh, well, it's, you know, is it the same residents that have been there the whole time, do we know? They haven't. Is one me?
Yeah, you owe us.
So how is this brought to our attention?
The one who got his reading for this last month and it was just outrageous and he wasn't watering or anything. And the other guy's reading hadn't changed at all. It's basically, this grass is green, this grass is brown. Who's been doing what?
You know, so I guess I would, I would like to see us, I guess, uh, you know, just refund the one. You know, one ex-resident, you know, his money that he's, he's been overpaying for all this time. And then, then the other, other, other ex-residents, we would just eat that cost and it's kind of our, our, I guess, mistake in a way. I guess, unless you guys have some other ideas or, or paths. I'm not sure if we can go back. Like eight, nine years and, you know. Bill all the time.
I haven't discovered when you knew or should have known. And we have meter issue resolved or?
Yes, it has been resolved.
Now, one guy's gonna be surprised when he gets his bill next month. Cause it's gonna be a lot different than it was the last few years.
But he may have gotten fifteen hundred dollars cheaper. I like, I think that's a great idea, Casey, it's our mistake. Definitely have to refund the gentleman. Or the lady, whoever, and, uh, correct, credit them, yeah. And I don't see it, that we go back and try to get that from that person, darn mistake over the last nine years. So I think we need to do that, make the motion and.
I'd love that we, uh. Credit, uh. David Grant, uh. One thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars. And, uh, and we'll waive, uh, Dallas, uh, Schneider's.
Okay, we have a motion to court, second by hack, discussion. Roll call.
Start.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Wolf, an hour.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Anything else, Casey? All right, thanks. Jason?
The only thing that I have is, Ron got back to me on the stainless steel sandhopper. On how long they would hold the price for. They would hold that six thousand plus the applicable freight through September. And he also did get a bid from Northwestern Equipment. And, um, that one's. Oh, almost eight hundred dollars higher than, than the Swanson stainless steel one. But I wanna just hold on to these, I, I think it's too, too soon to pull the trigger. I mean, we got a few months, so we'll just stay on these as long as it's good through September. And also too, that Northwestern Equipment is with, without the. Oh, where did it go to? Without the, yeah, without the water, so I mean.
And eight hundred dollars higher?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, seems like it's gonna be an easy decision.
Yeah, right, right. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I was gonna come back and.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Streets all painted and?
Yeah, they're, they're wrapped up. I mean, what did I tell you, Ron, last week? And they were all most done, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Nancy?
Um, since Buster's not here, I can do something on here. Um, I was at the last meeting, as far away as that, as of the last meeting, the hotel is still going forward. Um, the Pioneer Apartments are moving forward. He does have a waiting list of people who are seriously interested in, in renting some of those apartments. And the Commerce Center is for sale. Um, they're looking at listing it. Uh, now they talk about doing it themselves or listing it and I think they're going forward with the listing, so. You know, if anybody is looking for a rental, it is full, it's got, it's a whole renters, so it's a good investment opportunity. But that would be it.
All right, thank you. Pretty much winds things up for us, right?
Four pages of new bills, I added eight.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, approval of the bills and there, like Mark said, there are four more pages I just added.
I got a question on the. The Pioneer Park, I see that's on it. On the bills there.
Oh.
Yeah, right here, the park, yeah, sorry. So then, so then, so then, I guess, the donation, is that, is that? That, I guess, we're gonna pay the bills or what?
I, I transferred the five thousand from the sales. He's an art crafter, brought me a check for ten thousand as their donation, so we're running it through the city so we can keep track of it. Better that way and then we can do reports as I keep you in the know, so you'll run it up. And I talked to Warren about that and Jerry and said, yeah, we'll run it through here, so that we can keep that in track of what's going on.
You know the question of those?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf to approve the bills. Second, second by stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf. Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Wolf, an hour.
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.